I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for participating in the lead role call to the attorney of the court.
Ron Fruit.
Here.
Karen Tepley.
Here.
Tom McCarthy.
Here.
Rachel Schultz.
Here.
Melanie Walters. Melanie Walters.
Here.
Sorry, I'm going to hear you. Douglas Martnick.
Here.
Steve Downs.
Here.
Ryan Cairns.
Here.
We have a forum and I certify that this was properly noted.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is approval of the agenda. I'm going to make one amendment. Public comment is typically later in the meeting, but we're going to move it up tonight, so I want to place it. Let's see. Before we get to, before we get to the Finance Committee recommendations, I want to do public comment because what I think most people are here for is in that section. So I want to move public comment up in advance of Finance Committee recommendation.
Motion to adjourn the agenda with the ladies.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second. Did you get those, Madam Clerk?
I did.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one's carried. Next up, approval of the minutes. Once the council has had a few minutes to read, do those. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minute meetings from August 5, 2025.
Motion from Ms. Walters. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ms. Schultz. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one is approved. Okay, next up on the agenda is City and Utility Department head reports and concerns. Who's got the microphone? Jason, you can go first.
All right. We covered a lot of the economic development elements under, in finance, where I give the official report, but real quickly, under economic development, we continue to work on the Congressional Directed Spending Grant, which includes a Lamont subdivision, High Drive, and Jefferson Street project. We are seeing some site activity at Panorama Estates, so we're pretty excited about that. So we expect full blown construction to be commencing eminently here. We've been working hard with Cobblestone Hotel and pre-development agreement, and we do have several CDI grants that are under our management. Wild Honey Collective, we're working on the first draw request there, and we have restarted an official application process with ADG. On the public work side of things, there's several projects taking place. One is we are continuing to collaborate on the donation of a dugout and working to finalize the plans for dugouts on the softball fields. We are continuing to work with Bureau of Aeronautics on airport master planning and runway improvements. Our reorganization effort is ongoing and probably will be for months and months in our Buildings and Grounds Department. And that's just a really deep look at the equipment that we use and are we being efficient and really following best practices and then trying to figure out how we handle some of the deferred maintenance that is painfully obvious. Streets, we are working on approximately 38 blocks, which we anticipated that they could be in at the end of last week. I think the new public announcements are out there. We are now expecting them potentially tomorrow morning. And we, I have been told that it could, in essence, be done in one day. So approximately 38 blocks in one day. We continue to work on the church and Court Street parking lot reconstruction. That's taken a lot longer than was necessary because in the removal of the old product, we found buried foundations and a lot of clay that required us to dig much deeper and to remove former structural components so that it doesn't crack up through our new blacktop. And I just talked to the contractor today and he says they're waiting for the lot to actually firm up. So there's been a lot of extra work done on that parking lot to try to make it last as long as possible for the future. Street screws, always working on, street cleaning brush pickup, and recently there's been a big push on the street painting. So that's my update.
Thank you. Amanda, what do you have from the first office?
All right. Most people have gotten a letter from our office. It's actually from Accurate Assessor. We just redid a revaluation. We haven't done one since 2008, and the state required that we do one. So a lot of people are noticing that their property values have went up considerably. If you've been following housing prices though in our area, this is a great thing because it means that everybody is gaining equity in their homes that they're owning. And just because your value went up does not mean your taxes are going to go up. So we won't know, they're working on the budget now, but really, everybody's went up to that market value. And so if you're questioning what that means for you, you can check out our website. We have resources for you on the assessor page, or you can contact Accurate Assessor, and they'll be able to help you to walk through that. We have open book next week, so you can also talk to the assessor then. So don't worry. This is a, really a good thing that's happening in our community, that our housing is going up, your values. You can sell your home for a lot more than what you probably purchased it for. But that also means that we have a housing shortage. So hopefully we'll be able to fix that. And then I also need to announce to the council that this will be my last meeting as the clerk. My husband accepted a position in Utah, and so as of October 1st, we are moving west. So as much as I've loved this job and wanted to stay here, I chose my husband over the job.
Still trying to change your mind.
Yeah. It was a very difficult decision. So thank you for the opportunity to be the clerk for a year. It's been amazing and hopefully I've left the position better than, you know, better than, you know, leave things better than you found them. And that's always been my philosophy.
Thank you. Ashley, do you have something for us tonight?
Sure. I just, I want to start by thanking Amanda for her time with us. She's been an absolute blessing to us while we've had her. So we wish her one good, the best as you made that hard decision that we wish was different.
So that means we have an open position for city clerk. If anybody is interested, if anybody knows anyone that might be interested, we will be posting the vacancy as well as job description and other materials on our website soon. We also have another announcement. Our zoning administrator, Matt Williams, has accepted a position with our Buildings and Grounds crew. So he'll be the lead. So the zoning position is now vacant as well and will be accepting applications for that. So we get to keep Matt with us in the city and we're very happy about that. He's just going to have a new role. In the meantime, he is going to be continuing to assist with zoning as well as doing Buildings and Grounds. So it's going to be a little bit challenging. So we just ask for your patience. Both are big jobs. And then in our Buildings and Grounds crew, aside from the lead, we did have another just crew vacancy, and that has recently been filled. So now they're fully staffed in that department. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that we did have RFPs published for Simons as well as for garbage collection. We've received responses for both of those. Darcy and I are currently reviewing all of those submissions, and we hope to have them before you, next month, to make a decision, a selection on. And then I guess I have one more thing. As Amanda mentioned, we have the revaluation, values did increase, and that's to be expected. We haven't had a revaluation in many, many years, and we've seen the huge changes in the market. But one thing I want to point out is the average increase for residential dwellings was 76%. So if you look at your, the letter that you received, if you look at how much percentage did your value go up, if it was higher than that 76%, that means you're likely going to have an increase in your property taxes. If it's around the 76%, you may not see an increase, and if it's below that, you might actually see a decrease. So revaluations do not create new tax dollars for the city. It's a really common misconception. It's just, we have the same pie, it's just how the pieces are sliced. So it's trying to give everybody a fair size, their fair share of the slice. So just look at that, look for that for your home, look at that 76%, you can kind of get an idea of where you might be. But we won't know until later this fall what property taxes will be because that's determined by the council when they set the mill rate and we find out from the state what the allowable tax levy is, things like that. So we just don't have that data available. So as Amanda said, at this time, as far as it goes, it's not necessarily a cause for alarm because we don't have the final figures, but you can use that, that average to kind of assess where you might be.
Thank you. Where's the microphone now? We need to get it across the room. What's going on at the library?
At the library? Can you hear me?
I don't know if that's on or not.
How about now? I just would like to let everyone know that we have day passes for Wisconsin State Parks available for free to the public. You do not need to have a library card. Stop in and pick one up while supplies last. It's still a great time to get out into the state parks in the fall season. We have a vacancy on the library board for a city resident. If interested, please contact myself or Library Board President Karen Tepley and complete the volunteer form on the City Person Center's website under Opportunities to Serve. We have increased demand for all of our meeting rooms at the library, which is a great thing. We're very busy. Like to see those meeting rooms filled up and be used by the public and various community groups. Those rooms are available to anyone at no cost. They can be reserved online or by calling the library. We've recently had our parking lot seal coated. Over the last month, we've had minor repairs to an air conditioning unit and the history room dehumidifier. Upcoming projects, we're looking at collecting information for carpet cleaning and floor waxing, a new digital sign for the front of the building, and repairs to the worn concrete and railings on our front porch. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gold?
Good evening. Utility side, working on the 26 budget. We finished up on the electric side, new transformer at Dobna School. We got the wires lowered for the 2026 DOT project on 14 East in front of Rockwell. We had to lower them for the ditching there. We've talked about that before, but that was completed last week. Electric, we're up to 1,500 electric AMI meters installed, 430 water meters are installed at this point. Wastewater, the trial that we started in May is still going very well with the wet industry. Met with them and looks like potentially a long-term relationship. So continually working on that. And the pipe that I've been talking about for a couple of months on ADG North is to be done in September underneath the Pine River into North Park. On the wastewater side, we're looking at a new jet truck and for the jetting of the system and then the hydro excavation that the electric department has been using a lot of with all the new fiber in town. So we're not hitting anything. On the water side, lead and copper compliance sampling was done on 40 samples. Citywide, the results were in compliance with the 90 percentile for around 1 and 2. DNR has the information and looking for exemptions of adding anything to our water. And it sounded like Steve got that this afternoon. The water flushing that we normally do in the spring will be done September 22nd through the 26th and the 29th through October 3rd after the seal coating is done and trying to beat the major leaves falling in the community. Visited the NHS house on Friday. That's great for the utility. You know, all those lots that we've got in town with all of our infrastructure, we talked about adding infrastructure, but if we can do that, what we did on that lot, that's a big win for the utility. And then just a reminder, our annual customer appreciation night is Wednesday, October 8th from 3:30 to 6:30 at the community center. That's all I got.
Thank you, Chief Jones.
I'm going to have late first.
Going to go with Joe, I mean, that part's all right.
Okay. Thank you. Hello, everyone. We are just wrapping up a great season at the pool this year. Hopefully you were able to get out there. We had a really fun event on the 23rd, or the 25th. We had our first annual Lazy 50. We wanted to do a 5K at the Lazy River, but it turns out that's 100 laps and 30 watts. So we ended up doing a 50, and everybody, everybody loved it and had some good suggestions for next year. So we're going to try that again and maybe do some sort of triathlon involving laps and, you know, maybe a slide challenge or something fun like that. But it's been a good season at the pool. So the guards, we were able to do an extra week this year. It was half, half days, but you know, also it was pretty cool. But we still had our morning diehards that made it out and were knocking on the door when the guards were like sitting in their sweatshirts and hoods on, and they were out enjoying the nice 85 degree water. So it worked out good. Our rec programs were really well attended this year too. It gets really quiet once all the staff and the kids are out for the season. So we can clean up our office. The coaches make it their closet a little bit. So we're looking forward to planning for next year and we're planning for fall programs as well. So we'll be commencing pool shutdown the end of September this year.
Thank you. Chief Jones?
Good evening. So I was not available in August meeting, so just, just a quick note. National Night Out was a huge success, and I want to thank everybody that came out and participated and had a little food and a little camaraderie with the first responders. So it was, it was well attended, we believe, and all the final numbers are not in quite yet, but we believe it's our largest yet as far as attendance goes. So big shout out to the National Night Out Board and everybody that came out and supported that. So it was great. Also, just a quick catch up on June and July monthly reports for the police department. June, the police department handled 203 calls for service. We made 19 criminal arrests. We issued three ordinance citations. We made one juvenile referral, 17 traffic citations, one emergency detention, and two warrant arrests in the city. And then just the total revenue from restitution, printing copy invite licenses, records requests, things of that nature, was $3,011.77 for the month of June. Month of July, a little bit slower, but still had plenty to do. 188 total calls for service. We made 34 criminal arrests. We issued 11 ordinance citations, two juvenile referral citations, 23 traffic citations, and four warrants or P and P pickups. And again, our total revenue from that line miscellaneous stuff was $3,087.63 for the month of July. So all the numbers are not in yet for August, but I'll have those at the next meeting. We've been playing, staying plenty busy, which unfortunately is not a good thing in my world. So I'm glad it's slowed down just a little bit. Your guys don't pass that along. Appreciate you.
Thanks, Billy. I think I got everybody. Did I miss any department head? Okay, thank you, everyone. Next up, the Mayor and all the person's committee commission board reports and comments and/or items to be discussed in a future meeting. Mr. Ron Fruit?
Just kudos to the library, Stacy. Our grandchildren will come and enjoy their tickets, and they've also been reading. So what a great program, what a great, nice way to support the community.
And I didn't even mention that, Ron. We had, I think this is the fifth year in a row where children can read to earn their way into the fair or ride into the fair. We're getting that each year.
Good idea. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Karen Tepley?
Yes, from Historic Preservation. Just want to announce that the plaque that we are going to be unveiling has arrived, and so it's actually in the building. And there's been a special meeting called for tomorrow at 5:00 PM here. If we have anybody in the community that would like to attend that meeting, it's a planning meeting for the unveiling ceremony. So if you have any input, please show up at 5:00 PM tomorrow, September 3rd. And then just also to add on to Stacy's report, this is budget time. So the library receives funds from both the city and the county. The city's amount that we've received is negotiated, but the county amount is set, and it is set by the amount of circulation that we, that we receive from those outlying areas that do not have a library. So September is library card month. So if you have friends, relatives, kids that don't have a library card, please stop by and get one. And then once again, checking on books is how the county supports our library. And then I just have an item for a future agenda. I think at one point we were going to have running report, I think it was every quarter for the taxi service.
So we were, based on the DOT audit, it was recommended that we do quarterly reports. And so that we could request running do that, or we could do an internal report.
Okay. If we could have running report, if he is willing, at a future council meeting. That's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Mr. Tom McCarthy?
Nothing to thank, very much. Thank you.
All right. Rachel Schultz?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Elaine Walters?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Doug Martnick?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Steve Downs?
I'd just like to thank Commander Keller for her service as our city clerk. She did a great job, and I hope it really works out for you in Utah. Enjoy. Thank you.
Ryan Cairns?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
I have a few things. Steve Wright, Amanda did a great job for the city, worked very hard, very personable, fit in great with the staff, and put real effort into the place. So nobody can fault family for moving on up, as they say. And her husband got a great opportunity. I think he should be taking, but it is set. I know it is for you too. But thank you. Not everyone in town has had a chance to get to know you. We did. Thanks for everything that you've done. Okay, some other things. The silt fence was placed at Panorama Estates today. If you don't recognize the term Panorama Estates, that's the apartment building across from the high school and campus property. There will be two more constructed, 46 minutes apiece, and they had called in the locates to utilities so they would know, for instance, were electric and water. Those things are buried, and that was to put that silt fence up. And before I knew it, I had three different people call me today. So if they didn't know this community's watching, they certainly do now. They put the silt fence in, and I talked to Wayne Kleinstaer today, who's the general contractor, and he said, quote, "The first small dozer is on site." So moving forward on that project. Okay, next up, we will have an opening on the city's utility commission, which we will fill next month. Mr. Mike Nice has served on the commission for the last five months. He has indicated he does not wish to continue. So if anyone who does wish to continue, please contact myself or Mr. Scott Gold. Mr. Gold, would you, Mr. Scott Saul. Mr. Saul, would you please raise your hand? That is Scott Saul. He is the president of the utility commission. If you have interest, let us know. Also, Karen Tepley mentioned the Historic Preservation Committee. There are openings there as well. We need some more members. Again, if that interests you, let us know. Okay, next up, there have been multiple outlets reporting this. I did. It happens every year. Schools back in session. Slow down. Look around. Watch for the stop signs on the buses, please. Please. I do this every year and I get the calls every year. Okay? School is back in session. Slow down. Watch for the buses. Show of hands, did anybody participate in the murder in the right place event that went on in town? We did? Okay. All right. All right. And I had a lot of comments from several people that noticed how many more people were moving about the town, and how many people really enjoyed the event. So I haven't heard yet if Crime Stoppers intends to continue that, but I did hear that it was well received and enjoyed. So I'm glad they did it, and thank you for everybody who participated. And then lastly, Mr. Craig Woodhouse is here tonight from Neighborhood Housing Services. You have a new homeowner construction in the city?
We do.
What happened today?
What happened today?
Or in the last couple of days? Anything interesting, Mr. Woodhouse?
Well, thank you. Yeah, Neighborhood Housing Services is constructing a family home on East Kinder Street. We broke ground last week. There's excavator, it's worked on site. Concrete will be given this week as well. So it's a three-bedroom home on an infill lot, and we've put a lot of work into kind of figuring out this program. And if there's a place or a space where NHS may be able to have an impact and partner with the utilities and Jason and everyone else here, it might just be infill lot. So if we've got that program figured out, we'd like to do one, and then two, and then four, and keep going. So that's happening on East Kinder. Stop by and take a look for it. But we're very pleased. We hope to have a family in there with holidays.
I heard you say that on the radio. I thought it was pretty aggressive. Do you think you can hit that?
Yes.
That's fantastic. Okay, anyway, thank you, Craig. I saw you there, and I heard your comments on the radio. I thought, let's turn the camera around. Thank you for doing so, Mr. Perry. Okay, next up on tonight's agenda is the treasurer's report. We're allowed the council to review the treasurer and city utility reports. If you have questions, please ask them to Ms. E. Questions or comments as you review the report?
There was a duplicate entry that was identified during the finance.
On the bill list, Steve?
On the bill list. The police for Verizon. Just so everyone knows, there is a duplicate entry. So there was an adjustment made at finance as part of the recommendation.
Questions or concerns with the treasurer's report? Okay, if there are none, we'll move on to the bills. While the council reviews the bills for this month. The bills presented on this day, excluding any library funded voices having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee, and said committee having duly investigated and audited these bills, hereby make the following my recommendation: that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and or exceptions. No adjustments or exceptions are listed. It is signed by all three members of the Finance Committee. Once the council has reviewed those bills, entertain a motion to pay them.
There is one adjustment there, the 59282 to Verizon. So we need to subtract 59282 as a duplicate entry.
Okay, so it's on there twice. We'll pay it once. It just got on there twice.
Motion to approve the bills.
Motion from Mr. Cairns. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Downs. Discussion of the bills. Hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Martnick?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Next up, items for discussion and action, item 5, lighted property enforcement at 695 One Chestnut. Who's going to take that? Do you want that or Attorney Wendell?
Well, I can, I can start and then Attorney Wendell can jump in. So enforcement action was taken by our zoning administrator. An order to raise was issued for this property. Right now it is a vacant home. Nobody resides there. So the order to raise was served June 4th, and it had a 90-day period in which the owner of the property was ordered to raise the structure. And if they failed to take action, then the city has the right to do said raising. And so that order, the 90-day period, it expires on the 6th, so September 6th. And then the city would be in a position, if they so choose, to publish bids and try to get someone out there to raise that structure. get someone out there to raise that structure.
Okay, and Mr. Wendell, for the public's benefit, because I've had a lot of questions on this, I'm not the only one who did, the process, the legal process, the process that was required to get us to this point on that property?
Sure, so you're looking at 66.0413, which is titled Raising Buildings. I will note, personal annoyance at the homonym of raising building versus raising buildings. I think a better word could have been chosen there, but again, personal. Essentially, what needs to happen, if the council recall, I had proposed, recommended the authority to issue such orders be granted to the zoning administrator. In order to expedite this process, there are a number of properties that we're looking to pursue this against, and rather than have to bring every single one before council team within the scope of the zoning administrator's authority. So he did issue that raise order. It's technically a raise or repair order. The statute allows for the property owner to repair the structure, so long as the cost of the repairs do not meet a certain value based on the formula. We've run said formula, and the cost of repair is unreasonable, and therefore, raising is the only option available to the homeowner. Should they fail to raise the property, as Administrator Oliphant said, then the city will have the right to go in and do so. We can go in, remove personal property, you know, and eventually, the cost of raising the building can be assessed against the property itself. I don't know the building's tax status off the top of my head, but theoretically, that could put the landowner at risk of foreclosure for delinquent taxes. But, yeah, so the biggest holdup, I would say, is that there was some difficulty in locating the landowner. It does require service in the manner of summons in a circuit court or something like that, which basically means I need someone, an adult resident of the state of Wisconsin, to walk up to the person and hand it to them after veracity. I was able to have a deputy locate him, and service was.
And he was in a different community?
Yes, different county, that was the issue.
So find him, get him served, and then issue the basically warning.
Oh, I have him serve with the order.
Yep.
So the document that he was handed said, you need to knock this building down in 90 days, or we'll do it for you.
And so the reason...
Any lease.
The reason it's on the agenda now is, I believe, the 90 days just expired in the last table, too.
Will expire later this...
Six.
The sixth.
The sixth. So here we are, thank you for that explanation. Any questions for Attorney Wendell on how this was done, or why? Okay, so at this point now, there's no question in anybody's mind, this building needs to be raised. That's been covered. So what do we need from the council this evening?
Technically, nothing.
Okay.
But we will be, we need to solicit bids for any demolition. So if the council wanted to make a motion related to that, they may, otherwise, we can always just publish a bid solicitation and then report that.
So the choice for the council would be simply to direct you to publish a bid solicitation for demolition of the property, the home, the building, at 695 North Chestnut Street, or perhaps request, the request or proposal be done, either way? Does anyone choose, want to make a motion in either direction?
I would make a motion that we would...
Okay, you want to direct the administrator to, what's the right phrase here?
Solicit bids.
Solicit bids?
Solicit bids, yes.
Okay, motion to direct the city administrator to solicit bids for demolition of the structure at 695 North Chestnut Street?
Correct.
Excellent motion, Doug. All right, is there a second? That was Mr. Downs. Any discussion? Can I roll call for that? Whoops.
Yeah, one question, so we're going to go for bids and not a request for proposal? Is there a difference?
Not practically.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the question, we'll have a roll call, please.
Teplin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Martnick.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next up is the structure of the tourism department. Is that you?
I think probably Michael.
Michael.
Yeah, so for various reasons, I was called on to review the structure of the tourism department. I would say the biggest development was a leaning between myself, Administrator Oliphant, and Director Richards, that cuts his title, coordinator, see, that's why I asked. Marty Richards, the head of the tourism department. It is not often the case that someone who is around for the origin of a department is both still around and willing to talk to me, so that was a nice change of pace for me. What Mr. Richards was able to relay is that the intent, at the time the tourism department was founded, was that it be eventually spun off into an independent entity, no longer under the oversight, nor the obligations of a government entity, but free to continue doing the work that it has been doing. Upon reviewing the current structure and the governing documentations, relevant state statutes, things like that, that was kind of my recommendation anyway, so we're kind of all on the same page. And the summary is basically that it is recommended that this council begin the process of formally removing the tourism department from within the city organizational structure, determining what resources it may need to be made into a wholly independent entity and/or what services the city may be willing to contract with the department in its new There are a number of concerns that I have with the way that things are operating currently, all of which would be resolved by simply making it its own entity. I think the very fact that it is referred to as the greater Richland area tourism, or that's how the department refers to itself, is indicative of the concerns that I have, which is, you know, there's more to Richland County than Richland Center, and the department is doing a lot of work for a lot of different municipalities, which is not necessarily what a city department should be doing. And, you know, certainly, from his reports to the council, it looks like Coordinator Richards is doing good work on this, but that work should be done either as an independent entity in service of the contracted municipalities, or with a greater focus on efforts that would benefit the city if it remains a city department.
Okay, so then going forward, the city then is no longer involved directly with Tourism Commission, so then Mr. Richards would not be eligible for city benefits anymore, he would no longer be a city employee?
If there was a structural change, where the tourism department essentially was no longer existing, and it became something like a nonprofit, and Marty remained or became the director per se of that nonprofit, he would not be considered a city employee, would not be benefit eligible. That entity, that newly formed entity, could be the recipient of room tax dollars. So like currently, the Tourism Commission receives 70% of all room tax dollars, and then they contract with other vendors, with the city, et cetera, to promote tourism and development. And so this would be continuing that practice, where 70% of the room tax dollars are not controlled by the city, they go to a different entity, and tourism efforts are explored through that avenue. So that wouldn't be a change to that, but certainly, it would be a change to the employment structure, and certainly, the way in which there is oversight of tourism activity.
And to the specific point regarding benefits, there is fortunately precedent for the city spitting off department. Actually, Chief Gold's predecessor was a city employee at the time the now Richland-fired district was created. And so I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but I hope that I can, if this is something that's contemplated, go through the records of that process and get some guidance to ensure that the work Coordinator Richards has done, is not, does not go unrecognized. We don't want to, you know, punish him for fulfilling the intent of the organization.
Okay, so if this new structure were formed, becomes a nonprofit, as the example you gave, room tax then forms the position that he fills?
If the city or the Tourism Commission contracted with that nonprofit, if...
Okay. All right, stopping right there. Questions or comments from the council on this point?
I have one question. Are there other budget, city budget dollars that go to the tourism?
Yes, currently, there are. So the position, the coordinator position itself is partially funded from the 70% of room tax dollars that the Tourism Commission peoples, and then the city contributes the other half as it is. And that was decided when Marty became a full-time employee to have that structure, and at that time, we were not yet expanding into other municipalities and collecting room tax, so there wasn't 100% of the revenue available to cover the total cost of the position, whereas things have changed in the years with the expansion and greater collection of room tax, and increasingly.
So does that change for all? If this would go into effect, would the city not contribute anything other than just the access to the room tax?
That would be, that would be a decision of the city. But I would say likely, it would be the city saying, here's the 70% that were required to contribute towards tourism promotion and development, and then depending on the circumstances, there could be an argument for more or not.
And for the public's benefit, and for the older persons who were not involved with city government at the time, Mr. Richards' position was created prior to Marty, the position did exist, a part-time basis, was last filled by Juan Arbogas, and the council at the time made the decision to put more effort into attracting tourism to grow the room tax. And in the years since, multiple townships in the county have also adopted the room tax, because everyone thinks about it, it just makes sense. Somebody goes online to a website and books a room at a B&amp;B, they are required by statute, the entity, the booking entity, is required by statute to collect that room tax, and to then submit that money to the municipality. So we don't do the work, they do, and we get the money, and 30% of the room tax money then stays with the municipality. So several townships are finding that they can use this as an avenue to help keep the roads in shape, for one thing, and the city's got other uses as well. And the intent from that point forward was that we would reach a point where this position could be fully, wholly funded with room tax dollars rather than taxed levy dollars, which is a very significant point when you get the city budget, because levies are set at the state level, they've been frozen in place 15 years or so, and those dollars are very precious. And so to get to this point is actually a very big deal, and a big-time achievement for the whole area. Okay, any other question or comments, and is there an action you're asking for from the council tonight?
Well, we need to know if the council would like to pursue exploring this or not.
Okay, which would be again to direct you to, so is there a motion to direct Administrator Oliphant to explore the structure, the restructure of the tourism department?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would just say on behalf of tourism, and I met with Marty, Karen met with Marty, and he is fully in favor of this move, and so there is not any angst between entities, there is agreement, and so I think as we make a decision tonight, it's important to know that Director Richards or Coordinator Richards is on page.
It is, and when I just mentioned that this is a big deal, and a long time coming, and a big development for the community, it's also a compliment to Marty, because he did a lot of work to help us get to this point. So would anyone up here would like to make that motion to direct Ashley to again work on potential restructure of the tourism department?
I would so move.
Motion for Mr. Prue, is there a second?
That's okay.
Second for Ms. Teplin, is there discussion? Let's have a roll call.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Martnick.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Teplin. Motion is carried.
Okay, next up, Planning Commission recommendation, item 7, reconsideration of application for conditional use permit by Guru Ramashah LLC, with a recommendation for the minor by the Plan Commission. So this property is on Sextonville Road, and the gentleman who came to us and asked for a conditional use permit to operate a business there, had indicated that he was going to use it essentially as a staging area for a tree-cutting business that he's got. He is not licensed by the City of Richland Center, but he is working in other municipalities. While the Plan Commission and the council reviewed his application, Attorney Wendell found in the city ordinance that this sort of business that he's doing, and I'll have you elaborate, that there's actually a provision in city ordinance that prohibits it within 100 feet of a housing district. If you've been down Sextonville Road in your life, or houses on Sextonville Road and right behind it on Park Street, Mr. Wendell, what did you find on this one?
So, the city ordinances allow for certain uses for the various zoning districts, either inherent to the zoning district. So for example, this particular property is Zoned Commercial General, or CD, you could open up an art studio, or gallery, or a book office supply, and/or stationary store without needing a permit, certainly not needing a conditional use permit. Unfortunately, tree service is not within that set of uses, and so we go down to the conditional uses for a general business district, which is expansive, there's 44 total entries into it. Unfortunately, none of them speak to the operation of a tree service. My initial recommendation was actually to insert a catch-all provision into this, basically language saying any kind of similar use, but as I was preparing for issuing that opinion, I read through thoroughly enough that I caught that there was such a provision in there, specifically number 30, which states similar uses, and these are similar to the other entries, provided the structure in which the use is carried out shall not be located within 100 feet of any residential district. A tree service is consistent with what I would think is a reasonable comparison with the other conditional uses that are allowed under a conditional use permit within the commercial general. So then it became the issue of the 100-foot restriction. Initially, I had said that the Plan Commission and the council could take no action while I investigated the matter, see if I could determine why that restriction was in place, why it exists only for this catch-all provision and not any of the other uses that are... So just a little bit of context, a sports arena is one of the uses that can be made in a commercial general zone district. I cannot imagine that the noise level of a filled sports arena and that of a operating tree business where, you know, he's not licensed within the city, so he's presumably going to be out and about during the day. I could not come up with a logical explanation for why that restriction is in there. I could not find any notes or documentation from the time that the ordinance was passed indicating why that restriction was there. Unfortunately, it is there, and at this point, the landowner has kind of been in limbo this whole time, and therefore, my recommendation at this point is, as there is no legal way to grant the conditional use permit that if he denied, that way, the landowner can seek the remedies allowed to him under law and/or resubmit an application. allowed to him under law and/or resubmit an application. While at the same time, the Planning Commission and/or this council can consider whether or not an amendment to this ordinance may be warranted to either impose that 100-foot restriction on the entirety of the conditional use permits or to remove it from the catch-all provision as it sees fit.
Okay, so when the Plan Commission heard this, is I randomly attended the recommendation to the council from the Plan Commission was to deny the application for a conditional use permit by Guru Ramashah LLC. So I entertain the motion to do so.
So moved.
Motion for Ms. Walters, is there a second?
A second.
Second for Ms. Teble, is there discussion? I'll have a roll call with you.
Schultz.
Aye.
Mertney.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Karens.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Teble.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next is Planning Committee Recommendations and Action. This is where I move public comment. Before we begin that, I have eight, these are the forms. This is public comment, it's not a formal public hearing, it's just a public comment section of the City Council meeting. Anyone from the public who would like to speak tonight, I need one of these from you. There are blank ones, right there and show them. Right there, if you want to speak and address the council tonight, please fill one out and we'll give it to me. Okay, the way this typically works, public comment, we limit comments to two minutes. I will give somebody away tonight. I know people want to be heard and that's the point. I'm also going to ask you to respect everyone's time and remember several people want to speak, so I don't want a speech, please, but you want to hear from me. So I'm just going to take them in the order they were handed to me. More than one person asked that they could go last, I just put them in a stack. Trying to be fair to everybody. When I call your name, we'll get the microphone to you and you just can go ahead and tell the council what you have to say. All right, first one on, in my hand is Mr. Mike Brendeman.
Hi, yeah, Mike Brendeman, five 48 story drive. I was at the meetings three or four years ago and I argued against this at the time. I think Story Field has been a park there and for many years, I mean, it's been an athletic field for probably the better part of a century. It's really the only park on the east side. It's used a lot. I, I think I could make as good of an argument that Cross Park should be used for this subdivision instead of Story Field. I, I think there are things that haven't been looked at. And one of those is increasing traffic around the hospital or around the hospital parking lot is not a good idea, not to do that intentionally anyway. Also, Fourth Street is a very narrow street. It is a one-lane road when there are cars parked on both sides. And there's a car up there that's, was damaged because someone tested that path. And I don't know what can possibly be done about that. Also, Cedar Street will have increased traffic. And, you know, you've already got a dentist there. The problem with increased traffic on Cedar Street is that it almost turns Story Drive into a one-way street because people coming up and over from Seventh onto Cedar, they come up and over that hill not realizing that, hey, there's a blind road there. You can't see Story Drive. So when I'm on Story and, and coming out onto Cedar, I first I look to the left to make sure nobody is coming up. Then at the, you know, I yield, but I only yield at the very last second because I'm looking right, looking right, there's nobody coming, so okay, I go. I did run into an issue once with that, but it worked out okay. So that's a problem too. You've got, there's just too much traffic that will increase on, on Cedar. There's also the issue, and I'm assuming that that's probably resolved, but you've got a lot of water flow coming down from Valley View that comes across Story Field. So Story Field is a pond at times. My understanding is a storm sewer will run down underneath, but the storm sewer will go where? Because there is no storm sewer on Fourth. So there apparently Fourth will have to be torn up so storm sewer can get all the way down to church. So those are the things that, you know, haven't been addressed. And again, everyone that spoke at the meeting two or three years ago spoke against it. So I really don't know why the, the common council is continuing to pursue this when there's really no support from the local residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, next I have Chris Younger.
Thank you, man. I've only been here for four years. I came from Chicago, big city where it was you can reach out your window and touch your neighbor next door. Story Field is the reason why I bought the house. I'm on 606 right across the field. I have five kids, four were small enough to use the field every day. Four of those, three of those four play sports, they're out there every single day. My son plays sports with one of the young boys that's sitting out here in the hallway. He's out there every day in that field, the young boy that's out here in the hallway. My kids are out there every day, summer, winter, sledding, all the time. That field gets used more than you guys, I think even real. There's plenty of other open spaces if you drive down 14 to build duplexes. I see on your little map there that you guys got a little green field. Is our neighborhood kids going to be able to go play in that little green field for the duplexes? No, they're not. That's going to be used for the families that are moving in there. So our kids are going to have to trek on their bikes down to the parks, cross cup, over to the, all the other parks. So our kids are going to lose their play space to build duplexes. There's plenty of other open spaces in town for you guys to build your duplexes. That space is one of the reasons why my family bought that house. I don't want to see it go. I'm 100% against those duplexes being built in there. Like he said, it's going to just cause more traffic, more congestion, more problems. I, I'm just, I'm 100% against it. I know people came around last summer because you guys were talking about it again last summer. Nothing ever came about it, but I was against it last summer when, when there was really going against it. I think it's a horrible idea. There's so many empty houses, abandoned houses that you guys can... There's these companies that are coming in wanting building these duplexes, have them knock these houses down and rebuild these houses. There's so many. I just don't understand why you guys constantly keep going after Story Field. I'm sure 90% of the people in this room are against it. You guys should just leave it alone and go for some other property.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, Al Pellin.
Thank you. First of all, I know we're here to speak, thank you for the opportunity to let all of us speak, you're an awesome reporter. And also hopefully we can listen. Is the, is the builder or developer here so we can, you know, listen to them too?
Please proceed.
Okay. I grew up here and a few weeks ago I became a homeowner overlooking Story Field. One of the main reasons I chose to own where I did was the location as many other people have. Land like Story Field is not simply trees and grass or just a vacant lot waiting to be repurposed. Every day, there are multiple people utilizing that space for numerous activities. Everyone here knows it is a peaceful, green space with a storied path. It enhances the lives of everyone who lived there and those who pass by it every day. Once it is sold for a dollar and developed, that green space, its peace and quiet and its history are dead and gone forever. No disputes that Richland Center is in need of new housing, in fact is very welcome. I feel that the housing solution should not come at the price of a land that can never be replaced. As the civic leaders, we entrust you to do your due diligence to search out and identify appropriate locations for this or any development. They are out there. We expect transparency and that you honor your obligation not only to meet today's needs, but to safeguard resources for future generations. I believe this new development can be done, but please not at Story Field. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Demin.
Yes, that's, that's me. Hopefully I don't take too long. It's hard to follow, you know, what some of the others have already said because, you know, I agree with most of them. One thing I want to bring up is the dollar. I think that's absurd. You know, if someone does want to develop something in this community, it's worth more than a dollar. And okay, you know, I hear we only paid a dollar for it. Well, that's between two governmental entities. I understand that. Just a little history. I was born in the area, lived in Richland Center almost my whole life. Worked for a large company here, Rockwell. Retired from there, left the area for a few years, went to Minnesota and learned a lot of things. But I decided I needed to return to some roads. And I looked at several communities in this area, but Richland Center was always home. And I bought a little house that, that's across the road and corner of Cedar and Fifth Street. I always liked that house when I was a kid and would play on Story Field and, and it happened to come up for sale. Why did I buy it? Because of Story Field. That was a deciding factor. I was looking at other communities. You know, I could look out my window and I can see a herd of 100 deer sometimes, I sort of got hundreds, so many of them. But it's still nice to watch the sun come up over a green space. And as was said, if we lose this green space, we'll never get it back. Never. You know, my children played there, I played there. We used to run in the, in the, in the drainage system. It ended on, ended on, it's raining out on the fourth, I can tell you that much. But, you know, it's, there are just other, other things to do. I mean, I listened to Mr. Galt here and I happened to sit down with my friend Craig. They're working with neighborhood housing. We do have empty lots. You can drive, there's empty lots. It's a win-win. The utilities are there, you know? We can utilize these, these spots. It's, it's just, you know, it's, it's used, you know? I like seeing the, the, I hope soccer for years here. And I see the soccer teams and they're, and they're some of the, the ones that play, you know, in leagues that are outside of this, outside of the city. We have, you know, people coming from, you know, I'm not sure where all the teams are now or where they're coming from, but they're seen part of our community that they'd never see if it wasn't for that being utilized for, for those uses. So, you know, I, you know, my point here is, is we didn't get much time, you know, to really, to really investigate any deeper. I, I, I don't want to see, I, I don't want to see rentals in, in the neighborhood. I'll be selfish on that, you know? With rentals, you know, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with renting the house and renting a duplex, but it is always in flux. There's always people coming and there's always people go. And, you know, that's just another thing really that, that I don't want to see. I guess I'm running out of time here, but I guess the other thing I wanted to say is, yes, when I found out about this, learned about it, what resources that I have for some of us that really don't want to see it and that's social media. I got to ask you, you know, how many of you look at social media, the local social media sites? There's a couple. Yeah, they're a little dicey at times, you got to kind of filter through some of the stuff, but yeah, if you want people's opinions, post out there. On the, on the two posts that I put, I guess I put the third one out today, not one, 100% of the comments that I got were not in favor of using, you know, Story Field to do all of that. Not a lot. You know, maybe that's our petition form of the, of our era, that's how, how people communicate, how they, how they contact. A lot of good ideas out there too. You know, and I would urge you as council members, if you don't watch the local, you know, websites, is, you know, do it. If you, I think we can keep in touch with our constituents. That's it.
Thanks, Greg. Tom, I apologize, I can't read your last name, it starts N-E-L, Tom. Thanks.
I'm not much of a public speaker, so you might have to bear with me. My name's Tom, I just moved here October here. I am not from the area originally and I am incredibly grateful for the opportunity to, I guess, be a part of this community and more involvement from everybody that I've met so far. I purchased my home on Story Field because of, Story Field is the short answer. I grew up in a very similar community where there was this back lot where the younger generation at the time, I guess, were able to utilize this just how Story Field is used. And I was, in my experience at that time, it had gotten sold to a developer and was turned into a parking lot essentially. And it took away a lot of the soul of that general community. I don't want this for not only myself and potential future family of my own, but also my peers who may be able to utilize this space as it's currently being utilized. That's the majority of my opinion on it. I'm, I guess, probably one of the younger people in the area and I also want to share that with my community. I don't think a duplex is going to be something that is beneficial to that green space that, as was mentioned earlier, we will not get back once it's still. Thank you.
Thank you too. Okay, Alfonso Salazar.
All right, so my name is Alfonso Salazar. Moved here to Richland Center back in 2020 to do a job opportunity that I have here with the company that I work for. First off, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak this evening. I understand while housing is a valid need here in Richland Center, it truly was a struggle for me and my family to move here. I have a large family, I have six, or five children. I had to live away from my family for nine months because I couldn't find housing here. So I understand the, excuse me. I hope the council carefully weighs public input. Balancing residential growth with quality of life resources is essential for healthy, successful community. But Story Field is not the right location. Story Field promotes outdoor recreation. It draws visitors and support, excuse me, it draws visitors and supports the tourism that you all have mentioned this evening. Story Field provides valuable green space in a well-established area, aligning with sustainability goals and helping prevent urban sprawl within legacy areas of our community. I know this because I live here. And I came from larger cities. And Richland Center is unique and it's better than some of these cities. Keeping Story Field supports bio... Keeping Storyfield supports biodiversity and offers a peaceful retreat for walkers, runners, youth sports, winter activities, healthy lifestyles, all of which contribute to local economy. My children and many other Richland County residents have grown up using this beautiful space, playing soccer and other sports, sliding down the hill during crisp winter days. They exercise at Storyfield to stay active and they enjoy the nature this green space offers. Losing this space would have lasting impact on my kids, our youth, and our community.
Okay? Thank you. Nice to see Chad Morris. Okay, one more time. Yep.
I need to turn in my sheet yet.
Oh, I'll get you, yep. I haven't forgotten you. I have a sheet for Chad Morris, he's 51 Valley View.
He was here.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then, then I, okay, Ellen? Did you want to, did you say everything you wanted to say before?
Oh, no, no, I pretty much.
Okay. No, we're good. Just making sure, I'm coming, okay? Let me do it this way. Who's got the mic? Okay, let's get in the back, Mr. Madison and Shirley, if you'd like to speak, I can come to you next.
I didn't, I didn't get a sheet.
Okay, I'll get to you next.
And I think when you called Ellen, it was actually Al.
I did, actually.
So we're missing Al.
Okay, that was why, Ellen, you notice I gave you a double take because I called Al. Okay, Al, you sit tight here and we'll get to you, too.
My name is Al Madison and I live on Valley View. So we've pretty much covered the Storyfield. I'm not in favor of the proposed duplexes there as well. Right now, we're blessed to have other opportunities for building within the city of Richland Center. If in the future, once the Panorama Estates are completed, the Lamont process up on, above Rainbow, if that's completed and at some point we exhaust all of that housing and we get back to the point where we really, really need the duplexes, maybe at that time we could consider it. Right now, I feel that we're in a really good position with, with some growth, that we can shelve this decision for a while. If we do happen to proceed, I would like to see some other projects the developer may have worked on. Something that might give us an idea to score the footage, the quality of construction, the number of bedrooms, that type of information before we actually sign this agreement. I also have a couple other items not related to Storyfield. The next topic I'd like to address the council with is the 2025 revaluation.
Oh, the whole thing?
No.
Can you do that? Would you do me a favor and just come and see me about that?
Pardon?
Would you do me a favor and come to see me about that with the city clerk? I mean, there's nothing wrong with you commenting on it if you really want to, but I'm trying to.
So that is a public comment?
Yeah, you can if you really want to. I'm just trying to make sure the Storyfield people feel like we are.
I'll go back to you later.
If you want to do it, go ahead.
So with the 2025 revaluation that's in the process right now, we kind of knew it was coming. I was surprised to find out that it was just an interim market adjustment. I kind of expected after 16, 17 years that we may have proceeded with a full-blown revaluation where there would have been maybe inspections of the homes, interior, exterior, at least a walk-by. But that's not the case. We're just getting a market update, which is basically going against the data that we had before. And then one final question, I guess, that I have. Does anyone recall what we're paying for the market adjust, for this revaluation? Anyone have any idea?
Yeah, when we get it done, would you just hang out after the meeting and Ashley and I'll go over this with you?
Sure. And then the last thing, go to Cowl, so that's still on an agenda item for tonight.
Yep.
When we get to this topic, could someone explain in kind of layman's terms that we may all understand, the financing of the pay-go-tiff municipal revenue obligation of 1.5 million and how that's going to be repaid?
That's important.
That's all I have, thank you. Thank you for your time.
And then I'm going to go, thank you, too. So I'll go to Al Pellet and then Shirley.
Yeah, we moved to, moved to Forest Street in 92, basically because of Storyfield. We, daughter played out there, our grandson plays out there right now. Storyfield is a real gem for Richland Center. There is no other place like that for kids to come, play soccer, football, sleigh ride. There is no other sleigh ride hills in Richland Center. The Cub Scouts come, you look over there in the winter time, that hillside is just full of people. You're bringing people into the, into Richland Center, that's tourism. Pretty sure that they probably stop with the gowls or calvers or wherever on the way out. And like I said, it's a real gem for Richland Center. It would be a big mistake to get rid of it.
Al, thanks, Shirley, Leonard.
I agree with everything everybody has said. There are the two other points I want to make. One of them is environmental impact. Now, I doubt if they did one on Storyfield, but when you lose a green space for water coming down and also for heat, it can be, have all those driveways in the street and everything, you're, you're having a lot more heat there without the green space. And I don't know, environment, the environment is very, very dear to me. The other thing is, as old as I am, I remember walking with my grandmother from Stone House on Seminary Street by the, where the old community center is. And there were Quonset huts there for our soldiers' families. And you would see mothers out there with their little children and there were little garden plots there. And I'm thinking, maybe duplexes could go on there. I know it's in the floodplain, but I also know Richland Hills is in the floodplain. And I know they can be built so they're safe. But I guess, I guess my point is, I think there are other spots other than Storyfield. Thank you.
Thanks, Shirley. Okay, I think we got everybody. Is there anybody else who wants to speak in the public? Okay, thank you, everybody. We're going to just keep on following the agenda, so we'll be back to this in just a minute. Okay, next comes item eight, consider approval of contract with chrome fireworks displays.
You'll see in your packet, it's, it's that time of year again to get our contract with fireworks for next year. We discussed this at finance prior to council meeting. My motion would be to approve the contract with chrome fireworks and display LLC for City Fireworks for June 27, 2026.
Motion for Mr. Keens, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Second for Ms. Tepley, is there discussion? Your inaugural lead role.
Martinet.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Number nine, revised agreement for Simons Recreation Complex. Administrator Olfon, do you want to touch on this real quick, the changes in the contract, please?
Sure. Finance did review this at their meeting one month ago. There were some concerns raised about the language included in the revised agreement. Some adjustments since then have been made so that it obligates the city and the county to both equally contribute 50% of all actual costs incurred rather than language before where it just said they have, are responsible for 50% of any and every cost, so tightened that up a bit. And then it also addressed unbudgeted expenditures over 5.3. So this does require approval prior to expending dollars. In the event of imminent threat to public safety, there are allowances where a plam notification and consent from the city and county that purchases may be made. Additionally, this is meant to be a sort of bridge agreement, so we know that there's additional work to be done on the agreement. We have an evaluation of Simons underway through an RFP process. They have not been selected yet, but this is meant to modernize the agreement that the city and county have had since 1987 and get us through to a point where if there are any sort of major overhauls, we would do that.
And I'd also add, the agreement's moved January 1st, 2027. Correct?
Correct.
So it's, if anything needs to be adjusted going forward, we have this, but it is a really, really start from where we're at before, having unbudgeted expenditures. So my motion would be to approve the contract in front of us for Simons Recreation Complex.
Okay, we have the motion for Mr. Keens, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Downs, is there discussion? Your inaugural lead role call, please.
Downs.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Martinet.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Number 10, Storyfield Pre-Development Agreement. Mayor Sodell, you start this.
All right. Okay, before we get into deep into this, I want to start by commending everybody who spoke tonight for remaining civil. If you have watched what goes on in a lot of other communities, they don't do that. So Richland Center should be proud of itself in that respect. Mr. Detman and I were on the phone for about how long last night, Greg?
A good hour.
Yeah, and same thing. And we just agreed that we don't agree and we just said that's how it goes sometimes. No harm, no foul, it's democracy. Thank you, everybody. All right, I want to just share some information. It'll be quite a bit shared tonight. A couple of points, Chris Younger, when you spoke, you said that last summer there were people talking about doing this. If there were, that was a rumor. This has not been discussed at the city for two and a half years. I honestly did not expect that it would be again. While I'm still mayor, my term is up in April. I've said several times publicly, I'm not seeking reelection at that time. When this, when, two and a half years back about, we had two open houses down here that several of you are here tonight attended. And at that time, we were actively seeking a builder to pursue this and we spoke to several and nobody had interest because they were doing other things, that this project or this one or that one. What happened that brought us here, we were and are working on what we now call the Lamont Subdivision with Ellen Evans and Mike Lamont, and also working on the Panorama Estates project on, for housing. And so we weren't pursuing this and one of the builders that we had reached out to a couple of years ago called here and said, hey, I'm interested. I wasn't expecting that. I don't know that anybody here was. And we're seriously interested. An investor wants to go, got a good builder in tow, can we talk about it? So we met with them, talked about it, and what came to us was, if we can get the land from the city, we will do the entire build out and pay for it. And that is several million dollars of private investment. And in my five-plus years as mayor, that has been offered to the city exactly one time, this time. And so it's on the agenda because it needs to be. Somebody comes up with an offer like that, the council needs to hear it. And so that's what we did. And so what you're going to hear about, and there's going to be a lot of back and forth here tonight, this wasn't done on a knee-jerk move. When people say there's all these places to build, we have explored them. Somebody mentioned down 14, there are landowners that won't sell land. There are landowners that have priced the land at a point that the homes would not be affordable. There are open parcels where the city utilities is so far away, it would cost millions to put them in place, which would make the homes unaffordable. The worst butt-chewing I've ever taken as mayor from somebody I actually get along with most of the time was when I had the nerve to say, why don't we build some homes on the campus property on the hillside behind the buildings? And this is when the campus was still open. Because they didn't want us to change that property. And that's a known thing. And I am a BYN, not in my backyard. Every single thing has been proposed. I had phone calls objecting to the dialysis center, don't put it there. The Techcom building, don't put it there. The Dollar Tree store, don't put it there. Literally, all over the place. But it's just, I think, a natural reaction. I want everybody to understand that I respect the emotion and why you feel the way you do. I think it's a normal reaction, but it's your surroundings. If you don't think I feel this, you don't know me. I grew up here, I was on the cross-country team four years in high school on the conservative side, I ran a thousand laps around that track. Played softball there, played flag football there. Claire Heng was my coach, knew him well for years. Still have friendships to this day that started at Storyfield, so I get it. I also know this, state law mandates that for a municipality to get additional money to pay its bills, you must get new construction. There's no gray area. It puts small communities at an unfair disadvantage. It's garbage legislation, in my opinion. It has existed for about 15 years as part of Act 10. If you didn't ever hear of that, ask anybody that ever worked for the state. And in that, it says to increase your general fund for your city, your county, your township, you have to get new construction, buildings that were not there before or additional new construction. So for instance, if John Collins called me and said, I want a building permit to put a deck on my house, the increase in the property taxes caused by the construction of the deck counts. A new building counts. If you don't do that, your money stays right there. What has inflation done in the last few years? Exploded for the first time in 40 years and ran hot for multiple years and it buried municipal budgets. That's why the referendum parade. That's why all these school districts keep coming back again and again. It's why the city of Madison now claims to have a $31 million budget shortfall right now. We don't want to go to referendum down here at the city. We never had to do it. It is a distinct possibility. Because of what happened to the costs of running the city, it's nobody's fault, nobody here did it. I'm not a fan of changing people's front yard, backyard. I understand why you feel the way you do. I've got friends in the room, and to those of you who said, nobody's in favor of this, absolutely wrong. Several people have contacted me that are in favor of it. They're afraid to say it publicly, which is nobody's fault here. They just don't want backlash. I've had people say, get it done, we need to grow the tax base. I've had people say, I would like to live there. They just don't want any of you to be mad at them, which I think is respectable in the same way you come in here to say you don't like it is respectful. They don't want anybody to be mad at them, okay? So I don't know what's going to happen here, but I thought people needed to know why it's here. And I think you need to know that for the last two and a half years, we didn't advance this. A builder showed up with an offer we didn't expect. So it's here, it should be. That's how government works. You should be. This is the best turnout we've had in a long time in here. Thank you. I hope it's not the only time we see you here. We're about to craft the city budget. It's not going to be any fun. I'd like for you to participate. Sincerely. Okay, so to the older persons who were involved when the city took ownership of this property, which must be three, three and a half years ago, you know that the only reason the city of Richland Center agreed to take this property from a school district which no longer wanted it was for this project. It's the only reason we own it. Because the school district didn't want it. That's why the goalposts are rusted and the railing's bent on the retaining wall and the track is gone. Because the school district moved away 30 years ago. They moved away 30 years ago and left Storyfield. They weren't utilizing it. And I said, well, geez, that's kind of a shame. What could we do with it? And I said, and you're all raising great points that you should be raising. I said, if we ever put homes out there, we can't blow up the traffic patterns in the community. Don't put an 80, even an apartment complex up there. It would fit, but it would be insane. Don't dig, no basements, all slab on break. Don't mess with that drainage that's underground. My goodness, you could capsize the neighborhood. So this was professionally engineered by Veerbicker over in Reinsberg. This wasn't just us sitting around going, what can we do? And they went through that drainage, as Mr. Detman says he did as a young man. And they came back to us with what they think fits, et cetera, where to put it. We met with the utility department and we said, how many homes fit without taxing things like water pressure in the neighborhood? No more than 16. Social logic has been used here. Whatever decision gets made here, I just think the people should know that nobody down here just said, that was Storyfield, it's just not the case. here just said, that was Storyfield, it's just not the case. When you say it's easy to find places to build, no, it isn't. I've been mayor five and a half years, we've been chasing this and chasing this, and it's constant resistance that I will never understand. Don't build it there, I won't sell you my land, I literally want as much money for my land as they get an interstate frontage in the Delta. We can't do that. So we haven't done that. This hospital's trying to move three new doctors into this town right now and struggling to find homes for any of them. This school district tells me they lose new teachers after a year because they couldn't find a house here. Rockwell just told me, they tried to hire a new claim manager, couldn't find a house, didn't come. That's not a new thing. It happens all the time here. I hear it all the time. We don't have adequate housing stock at any income level, in my opinion, which is why we're trying to do something about. Regardless of Storyfield. For economic development in this community's financial future, we have to do that. A couple of points. This morning, I had a great phone conversation with Susan Story, daughter of Dave, and we talked a long time, as Greg and I had, and she was great. And she said, I hope it doesn't happen, but I understand it because I don't want it. She told me a lot about her dad, sounds like an amazing guy. Was a coach here back in the day. She said a phenomenal athlete. She said, had he gone to UW, there's no doubt he would have been an All-American. And all of these things, and he taught here, and then he left and moved the family to Greenfield and died, just like within a day or two of his 50th birthday, sudden heart attack, died. And so her class, which she was class of 63, she didn't graduate here, she went to Greenfield, but her class that she left when they heard her dad die, they're the reasons. So she said today that it is named after her dad. That they pushed the school board to name it after her father in his honor because the kids had loved him. And she told me he'd gotten sideways with administration here and took a better teaching job in Northtown. But the kids said, name it after my dad. And I told her, I love the story, and I wish I'd met her dad, and she, here's how she closed. She said, you guys will have to make a tough decision, and I understand. She said, I know how tough it is to get housing everywhere, and I know what it's like to be in public service, because she worked for the Minnesota Democratic Party for a long time. She thanked me for serving, and she wanted to make sure everyone here heard the same. And she said, whatever you do tonight, will you tell me what happened? I said, what time do you go to bed? She said, 8:30. I said, I won't call tonight. I said, what time do you get out in the morning? She said, 5:00 in the morning. I said, I'll call you tomorrow and tell you in the morning what the council decides. She said, Todd, it's a date. Great conversation. All right, the point I want before we get, and then I'm going to kind of open this up and let Jason speak from economic development. My interest in this is not because of Storyfield. My understanding is, I understand why people living there don't like this. I do. I need people to understand that we have chased housing all over the place and met constant resistance. We should have built homes on the hillside behind the campus, but we couldn't get access to the land. And now, I don't know what they're going to do. But they wouldn't talk to us then. It was bad, ugly. People calling me stuff I hadn't heard in a long time, trying to get homes built here. Again, thank you tonight for not doing that. Okay, know this phrase, whatever this council decides to do on this issue, learn this. Net new construction, I've said it over and over and over again. It's what state law mandates. If you're going to add money to the city's general fund, if you're going to add money to the county's general fund, if you're going to grow the household for the school district for the way the state funds out, if you don't get new construction, you don't get it. We're not Madison, we're not La Crosse. Big buildings like this, they don't come looking for us. Because we're an hour from the city, we're an hour from the interstate, we're not sexy. We got to do it. We got to build it and bring it. And it's harder than you think. If it was easy, we probably never would have looked at Storyfield. It isn't easy. If you keep telling me that, I'm going to keep telling you you're wrong. And if you want, I'll take you on a tour of the city and show you every place you are on. Somebody told, said tonight, why don't you develop La Crosse Park, I'll give you an easy answer, most of it's floodplain. We can't. Almost a third of the city acreage has been designated floodplain by FEMA. Almost one in three of our acres has been designated floodplain. Can't build on it. Or the red tape on it is so restrictive, you wouldn't build on it. I just wanted you to add some background. All right, from here, Jason, economic development. Veerbecker worked on this engineering firm in Rehnsburg. This was before the, those of you who were there at the open houses a couple of years ago, they're the ones who came up with what you saw. Okay, so take it from here on what the builder has proposed, how we got to this position.
So, okay, I'm basically going to review the agenda item cover sheet that you all have in your packets, and we did review it at finance. But as is clearly understood at this point, there is a developer that has come forward that is willing to develop the property with eight duplexes or 16 units of zero-step housing. To incentivize the needed, this project and to fulfill the need for housing, the city is offering to sell the land for $1. And again, this has already been discussed here, that's what we received the land for. We are also recognizing that the private investment that's necessary for the infrastructure that's required for the housing is a lot of money. We have an estimated cost to construct, back at the time that conceptual planning was done, and it was around $800,000 at that point in time. So again, inflation's gone up, I would suspect that number would be much larger. So the developer has offered that they would construct all required public infrastructure. They would complete the project within 24 months. So a build-out of the entire development within 24 months of the land transfer, they would meet all applicable design and permit standards that are required by state statute or city ordinance, and that they would deliver zero-step accessible housing, which was, has been a very common request to economic development and to council members and from people who are seeking housing. So the agenda item is seeking formal council approval of a $1 land sale and overall incentive structure along the city and the developer to proceed to a formal development agreement. So there's a pre-development agreement that is also in your packet. You can see the developer has signed that, it's got more detail to it, but again, the major points are the $1 sale and the commitment to build out within 24 months. And there are stipulations there that say, if you don't, they're still, they're still willing to pay the property tax associated with the development of approximately the value of the completed development. So in other words, they came in, bought the land, did nothing for it. Our agreement says that's your prerogative, but 24 months from now, we're expecting property tax revenue that equals the development, whether it's there or not. That's part of the agreement. So just to be clear, the revenue that's generated on this project, and I would, I'm probably very conservatively estimating the project at $5 million, you're looking at additional tax revenue of approximately $100,000 if it's at that level. I would say that it's probably north of that, so it could be between $100 and $140,000 tax revenue yearly. That revenue gets split three ways. It's roughly a one-third, one-third, one-third. That's not the exact percentages, but it's easy to understand that way. It affects the high school or the schools' revenue, it affects the county's revenue, and it affects the city's revenue. So of that 100, if it was 100,000, we would get 33,000, schools 33,000, and the county 33,000. So that's roughly the net new construction number that Mayor Todd is referring to. That's how, you know, we look at what it does to city finance and our ability to create budgets without raising property tax on the general population through referendum. So I think the, again, the attachments were included, we do have the plan there. I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have, but I think that's a decent summary of where the project stands.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to share a little bit more information. People have been sure to know who contact us. The gentleman who wants to invest the money is Mr. Doug Inkey. And a lot of you have heard of the company Town and Country Sanitation until a few months ago, that was his. He built that from one truck to 90-plus and sold it. It's him. He sold his business, therefore he has the means to do this. And he's the one who wants to fund this out and own it. His builder that he has chosen is someone he's known for decades, a man named Dan Vineborn. Give you guys a quick background, Mr. Vineborn has built duplexes for a few decades now. He has several in Boscabel, he has several in Brady machine, he has some in Decorah, Iowa. He built one on the lot where Sheldon and Pearl Streets come together in Richland Center back in the day, that was Chacoi Coen's property. He built two in the Wedgwood neighborhood. He also built Brady Ewing's house on the edge of the city. He also built Andy Tronkel's house on the edge of the city. Those are some simple examples. Mr. Inkey was not available tonight, he already had an engagement. Mr. Vineborn has said he is willing to briefly tell the room a little bit about his experience as a builder. As long as people agree to remember that he's simply the builder that the investor chose, because he won the election, we can all agree that he simply wants to tell you who he is and what he does, and we'll have him speak to the room. Can we do that? Take that as a yes. Who has the microphone? Can we get into Mr. Dan Vineborn? Mr. Vineborn, would you please stand? That is Mr. Dan Vineborn. He is the builder, not the prospective investor. Mr. Vineborn, how many duplexes would you guess you've built?
100, over 100.
Over 100. Okay, and some of the other structures you've built? Just for example?
You said some of them. Did Damian Miller's house?
Damian Miller, former catcher for Milwaukee Brewers.
Did Douglas Haster's bigger house, did his house? Did Don Waters', which is the health of La Crosse, did his house? But that's, I'm not, I'm just here as a builder.
Exactly.
Just here as a builder, so don't shoot the builder.
Yeah, right. Dan, how many years have you been in the construction business?
45 years.
45 years, you're from Boscabel.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so lots of experience. And you understand that quality would be expected if you're chosen to do, you understand that? And you understand why the name?
That's what Doug Inkey would give you, that's all I got to say. I'm going to say, don't shoot the builder.
No, nobody will, that's why I set the stage the way I did. He was kind enough to come down here. I just wanted you to know that Mr. Inkey didn't just say, well, gosh, who's got a hammer and a saw? That builder right there has done this for multiple decades, and he's done duplexes all around the state in some pretty high-profile homes. So the quality of the construction, I'm not concerned about if this goes to hack. Investors, same thing, I know who he is and know a lot about him. I told you before, he surprised us when he called. I just wanted you to know, that's your builder right there, and I wanted you to know whose money it would be and who would own it. It was Mr. Doug Inkey who had founded and then sold Town and Country Sanitation. Do you have anything else, anything else you want to say?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm in a spot, Todd.
Then, yeah, thank you very much. All right. Jason, do you have anything else to add to this? Okay, I'm going to say it this way. So as I said before, those who were on the council a few years ago when this thing first came out, know where it started and why we're here. But there are some older persons up here who weren't. Doug was not, Ron was not, Rachel was not, I don't know of anybody else. Does anybody have any questions? I mean, let's go. Doug?
These are all single-story?
So this, yes. So you see the diagram, so each orange shape, that would be a duplex. So two homes in each one, next to each other, no basement, slab on grade, do not dig because of the drainage. And you see the cul-de-sac, and where that would come in to the property, if you, anybody up there would know, the guys who live there, the people who live there, there's a cutout in the curb already on Cedar Street, so we thought, well, let's run straight back in there. When Veerbecker Engineering got up in there and walked through the drainage, this is what they drew, to not disturb anything that could cause trouble up there. So this is where they suggested. Now, just to clear up a question that came up at the open houses, when we did do those, that looks like there's going to be water sitting there all the time, a mosquito haven. That's not what that is. So there will be an indentation in the ground to capture stormwater, but it is designed to drain out over a 24-hour period. It's just a place to capture water, so I don't, it's not a lake. I kind of didn't like how that looks on the sketch, because it does give the impression that it is always going to be standing water there, which is not the design. Okay?
One other question, I guess I'm bringing up, something that was talked about, was rentals.
Yes. Yes, that's why Mr. Inkey wants to invest his money in this, because then he will own it. Okay? So what he has said, which I've just not had anybody else do while I've been down here, is that he would fund, you know, getting the infrastructure in place, getting the road in, all of these things. And when we were talking about this a couple of years ago, this same thing would have cost the city about $800,000 to complete. And at this point, it's just, if we can get the land, they'll do it. Okay, which is why we brought it here. And it was just, oh, we got to talk about this. So what else?
Well, that's really, I think, 32 cars, when you got 16 cars, maybe double cars, you know, it's not going to be what Anarim was going to be. I don't see that as an issue. Traffic, I do realize some of the streets are narrow. I live on East Street, but I think that's going to be less of a problem, knowing the limit that's going to be up there.
Can I, I'm going to ask you a question to anybody that wants to answer it from the neighborhood. So for years and years, when the high school was in your neighborhood, Fourth Street was one-way. Yeah?
Yep.
Why'd they change it? Because it is a narrow street. It always was a narrow street.
So is Cedar. You can't go, you've got to be single file and wonder, wonder hard there on Cedar also.
So I just wondered if there was like an attempt, was there a reason? Why did they change Fourth Street from one-way? Does anybody know that? Okay. Because I remember at the open houses we did, I don't remember which individual it was, somebody asked me if I would oppose the idea of making it one-way again if there was more traffic up there. And just so you know, I'm not opposed to that. Yep?
If Fourth was one-way, then you'd have to either get in or get out by going all the way around the hospital. And that's kind of a mess because of the emergency room. So that's probably why they want to go. I'm just speculating here. Because going up and over Cedar, you know, that's bad news. But if, you know, I would say that Story Drive should be one-way.
Okay.
Going east.
Okay.
Just so traffic can't come down and get hit on Cedar.
By the way, I also live on East Street.
Yes, I do. I'm going to, you know, move some of the cemetery and build La Crosse a view. You've got to look at me. You know, I mean...
If you can get a builder to do that, then...
Yes, sure.
Okay. Rachel, I know you were an older person at the time that we went through this in the first place. Do you have a question?
Well, I had, in talking to some of the neighborhood, in the prior analysis, somebody thought that there was only room available for four houses, and now we're looking at eight duplexes. Can anybody clear up that?
That's exactly what was shown at the open houses we did. Yeah, it's the same exact, we didn't do anything, we honestly weren't working on this for the last two and a half years.
Dan, I have a question about having no basement. Is that allowed in Wisconsin where we have tornadoes?
It actually is. Dan, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, you're perfectly legal.
If there are some...
Okay, that's fine.
A lot of people that build and put safe spots in them too. A lot of people that build and put safe spots in them too. A safe room, that way the building's locked off.
Yep.
There's a safe room, is that...
Thanks, Dan.
That was it as for my questions. My final question is, if this does go through, is there some way that we could memorialize the last name Story?
Well, as a matter of fact, and this isn't if it goes through, the Story family wants to sign, which I'm more than happy to.
To, I mean, to take it?
Yeah. Literally own it, which I don't think if this happens, anybody's arguing with. And I also, this is not my call, and it's only if we get here in the first place, but an idea I had, that I actually shared with Mr. Inkey. That's a cul-de-sac, right? I asked him if he would consider, actually, the city council would have the authority on it, to name that Clearhague Circle. After the high school coach, that coached up there so long, and the first state champion anything team from here was the nineteen-eighty-three girls' track team, which of course competed and practiced on that property. And Claire just passed, well, I don't know, was it a month yet, maybe? And I haven't said that to anybody until I just said it into the microphone, because I'd like to tell his daughters, and still know if that happens. And I would obviously invite the Story family here.
Should I get the card and get it as a...
Well, I just got asked a question, I'm going to answer it, Craig. You got asked a question, I'm going to answer it, Craig. She just asked me. That's all. That's all.
Yeah, she asked about the sign. She didn't ask about the...
Well, so, shit. I thought I said... Do you have any other questions?
No, I just have a comment though. When, I live on Central Avenue, and about twelve or thirteen years ago, they cut down all the trees and widened the street. So I was actually sitting out in the audience where you are right now, saying almost all the same things that you have said, that my environment has been destroyed, the trees were cut down, my heating bill went up, my house got hot, the grass burned up. And then to top it off, when the utilities went in, they put the gas line in on the opposite side of the street, but they had to come all the way to my house, they burned up the bushes. So, I really empathize with the way that you're feeling. Back then, nobody listened to us. The street got widened, the trees got cut down. But the only compromise that we had at that time is instead of replanting it with little two-year-old trees or whatever those spindles are, we asked if we could have the money and then we would go and finish purchasing larger trees. So that was our, that was our compromise. I don't know how to have a compromise with, with this. I haven't had but, but a week to think about some of these ideas, but I certainly understand how you feel.
You, Ron, do you have questions on this?
I don't have questions, but just to express, it's not easy to sit here. I had gym class on Story Field. I stood on Story Field when we got bomb threats and evacuated to school. I was on Story Field when Norris Hattlestedt made us run laps for every cowl that was left on the floor. And it's, it's not easy to try to balance what you feel is best for the community in the larger sense and those who live there. And regardless of how I vote, I will go home tonight and think, what should I have done?
Thank you, Ron. Okay, the rest of the council, I just started with the three that I knew weren't here, and we started this. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I have one other, Mayor.
Yes, Ron.
We live in Wedgwood, and of course, the lots that were given to the city by the Grangers, Jerry and Belinda, are now home to duplexes, which have been rented continually and really have been a decent addition to our neighborhood. They are nice buildings. We're fortunate to have the neighbors that we do, and I think they find them to be wonderful places to live, and so they have been a plus for us.
Hey, Ron, okay, who's initially up on the mic?
So, the word compromise got thrown around, which, you know, I agree with Ron. It is a difficult decision to make, you know, you're looking at the, the greater hood versus the immediate neighborhood. So I was making notes during the public comment section. As far as Fourth Street and like the water runoff, I believe that at one time, there was discussion between the city and the utilities about a future project of putting storm sewer on Fourth Street, so...
That's true.
Okay. One of the questions was, who gets to use the proposed green space? So, not looking at this, I was looking at the rendering that Veerbecker did, and I was trying to see if there was any measurement. Do you know, Jason, up top your head, how large will that green space be?
I mean, okay, there we might have some dimensions, so...
I know, I was trying to blow it up, but...
Move a little bit to your right, move it to the right a little bit. So we're looking at a standard lot, size of around a hundred and fifteen feet, so that, that green space there is probably right around a hundred and forty feet by at least that deep, so a hundred and forty by a hundred and forty looks to be a little bit bigger than that, a hundred and forty by probably close to two hundred. And then the, the stormwater management space is equal in size, probably a little bit more square footage. There are a number of things that have to take place in the planning for the development, so there are a lot of things that still have to be worked through. As you know, the, the plan is conceptual, right? So there's a lot of work that has to be done to verify all of that, but we did go far enough with the engineering to know that, that this is possible. So I think a lot of what has to be discussed is, whose care does the stormwater management stay under? We do have a well house there, a pump house that serves the neighborhood, so there is, and there are requirements in the ordinance, which they can be negotiated, but typically in an ordinance, when there is development, there is a certain amount of space that's required to stay green space. So those are all things that we, we need to work through, and that's why it is shown the way it is with stormwater management and then the green spaces, because it's likely that that concept is close to what it would end up being.
But we have not recorded any survey or anything like that that actually divided that parcel up, but still a one parcel.
That was going to be my next question. So the green space and the stormwater management, the hill area, I took my kids sledding there all the time as children, it's great sledding hill. Is that going to be a separate, split out into a separate parcel that the city would retain ownership of? Or is Mr. Inkey going to get the entire parcel?
It's, it's depicted as it's separate from the development area as far as the conceptual planning goes. That was from when, a couple of years ago, we went to the Plan Commission and Council and were developing these. It was expressed at that time that the sledding hill was an important feature, and it was a desire to try to preserve that. So it's depicted here in such a way as that we believe it can be preserved.
So, would...
Is that what the red line?
No, the, the red line is depicting the stormwater management system that would be buried underground to then carry the water to the stormwater management area.
Yeah, we, we did initially throw that up to try to retain the sledding hill and not block it with a duplex.
You've got to, those are all retaining pond, there's a fence to be in the way.
And I believe we had talked about what he had said at the last time we had the public hearings was, would that retaining pond have like a safety fence around it? So, you know, while it was draining, you know, because it is next to a green space, little kids aren't going to fall into it or somebody's dog running to it. So, would the developer, because again, I think, I think compromise is a good word to use tonight, would the developer consider cutting down the number of duplexes? There is a lot of desire, it sounds like, from the public comments to retain some green space, maybe cut out one duplex and expand the green space, and then make either, depending on who retains ownership of that green space, if the city does, great, it remains a public green space. If he has ownership of it, can we put a provision in the agreement that that green space is for public use, or can we not do that?
Hold on a second. Easements, right-of-ways for the city, because there's utility infrastructure, where would those be? Do you remember?
Well, there, I mean, if you go back to the engineering document, there's, there's going to be a need for easements, capturing, you know, these are, these are existing storm water systems that, that comes down and ends up at East Cliff, so it comes down valid use. So there's a, this would be an easement that would have to be recorded. I mean, the stormwater management system itself with pond, the retaining area, that would have to be, will probably under city ownership. And then any place where there's infrastructure buried in the streets, right, the street would be dedicated back to the municipality, so it would become part of the street system that we would maintain. So Scott, do you have anything to add with regard to utility easements and things like that?
You know, the water and wastewater would just be in the street, so electric would be on the north and south side, so just be ten, fifteen foot of water.
To the other part of your question, Melanie, about a reduction in the number of units, potentially that is something that the developer would be open to if that's what the city asked. However, it's important for us to remember that if we make a change or reduction in those units, that affects their, their revenue, and it makes each unit that is built more expensive.
I think when we first, when we first did this conversation and they had this drawn up, I think there were two options presented, one with the duplexes and one with seven. And the reason it was one with seven was primarily to do with the sledding hill.
Yes, because I, I went to those hearings, I went to one of them, I believe, before. Yeah, and there was, there was keeping green space, keeping the hill. There was even a discussion about moving, because we haven't had an ice skating rink for a while. That'd be a great spot, we had a bigger green space, put the ice skating rink up there, and then we all need to sell the Rambo meat, Jason.
So, I, again, I, I feel like we are trying to balance the, what's good for the community versus trying to come up with a solution for the neighborhood. And I feel like as we're going along, I have more questions on a new issue, so it's, but yeah, I would love to see like the green space expanded, and then know for sure, who is exactly going to retain ownership of the green space, the sledding hill, the stormwater I think those are all the questions I have for right now.
Okay. Good questions too. Okay. We do, we have, I guess, to roughly answer what you just asked, I don't know what the developer would say. But of course, it's the review of the council to approve what you wrote. So if you want whatever, a provision to cut out that duplex, a provision to whatever, protect the sledding hill, to put the ice rink in, you do that. Whether he accepts that or not, I don't know, but you could always, on any issue, council has the authority. Council the decision-making body for the city. So you could make a motion to pass this, make a motion not to, make a motion to bring it back in a month, and direct the administrator and economic development director to get the answers you're asking, anything like that. So if you feel, or anybody else up there, obviously you know how this works, you can make any of those motions I just listed. Yeah, go ahead.
So now I do have questions. So this is listed as a pre-development agreement, so all of those details, do you want that in this document, or is that going to be for later on? Is this document to say the idea of, you know, houses in Story Field is a good idea? Is that what you want from us tonight? Or do you want, you know, the whole breakdown of green space and numbers and all of that?
So this, this is the, the first step in, in creating the actual development agreement, which is going to have all of the details and ownership and standards and expectations laid out in it. However, you know, we need to, we needed to make sure that the council wanted to go there, right? So is the council going to accept and offer for one dollar for the land sale and then using these conceptual designs to base a development agreement off of? Or is that, is that, you know, just dead in the water? So we can't get to that development agreement and the detail, the refinement of it, unless we know you want us to go there. So this is an ask to say, it's really a request to know whether or not, should we go there with the developer and, and execute a development agreement, which absolutely could come back before this body for final review before it's executed.
Next question. You know, do we have to say later on, when you have all the details, that would also come up?
Yeah, so both, both with this and with the next item cobblestone, we're providing you with the, with the general terms that have been, you know, tentatively agreed to by both, both parties, but they require your approval for any solidification of those.
Okay, so Melanie's point, she felt as though she wanted more information than she had. Does anybody else share that statement? Ron, you do?
Yes. I'd like to have more discussion on the green space.
Okay, well then my suggestion to council, thank you for being honest in saying that. My suggestion to the council, would you then motion to direct, go ahead?
Motion to postpone either indefinitely or to a specific time period or condition. I would also recommend if it is postponed, that discussion be had with the potential developer.
Have it be...
To, to come in and answer questions in person, because I feel like he's going to be best positioned to know this information.
Okay, so exactly, so you postpone the decision, and if you have specific questions, you could direct administrator, economic development director to get you those answers. And then say, next council meeting, or don't put a date on it, just, you know, however you feel you should go. I do know, I mean, I think, I think this should probably be the next council meeting, because I know the developer is going to want to, just like you, he's going to come back with questions. He is.
I'm not going to be at the next council meeting.
Well, okay, we can, we can cross that bridge. But he's, from the other side of this, I would expect the same thing. If the council said, we want to know about this, this, and this, I think he's going to want to talk about it too. And sooner than later, because he's trying to, he's doing this or he's doing something else, right, or whatever. So, I mean, I've got at least three older persons looking at me like I'm not sure. If any of you would like to make a motion to postpone the decision and direct the administrator and economic development director to work with the proposed developer to get more information, now's the time.
Would this be something that you do at a special meeting, or do you just wait until a...
Whatever works, when we, when we're ready, when we have the available information that you're requesting. I mean, I could call a special session to do that, or it could simply happen in the next scheduled meeting, which would be the first Tuesday next one. But I guess the point, I promise you, if you just put yourself in his shoes, the developer's going to go, what do you want to know, right? They want to work this through sooner than later. And honestly, whatever happens here, the decision's going to have to come, so I wouldn't say, I wouldn't suggest putting way out there. I just want to make sure the council's making an informed choice. Everybody deserves that.
Ashley, do you feel thirty days is enough time? Ashley, do you feel 30 days is enough time?
Okay. I'll make a motion to postpone this agenda item until the October council meeting.
Okay, and a motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ms. Schultz, is there further discussion?
One thing, yes sir. So if there is specific information or specific questions, those need to be provided. You can't just say, I'd like to know more about green space. That is very unhelpful to the personnel that you'll be directing. So it doesn't have to be tonight, because, you know, you've only had limited time to think about it, but I would say within the next week or so, if you could provide specific questions that you would like answered, that would be probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that would probably be most helpful to the staff.
If you guys could, if you have a meeting or two or questions that you want to ask in the next few days, then we'll get that done. Okay, we have the motion, and the second is a further discussion. Hearing none, let's have a roll call.
Fruit.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Martinick.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay. That one's done for tonight. We're going to take a five-minute break up here. Number 11 is the Cobblestone Incentive Package. Oh, Mr. Bailey and Mr. Glassman. Okay. Jason and Ashley worked on this at the direction of the council, negotiation with Cobblestone. And what is before the council is what they worked out. And I guess I'll open it to either Ashley or Jason, if you want to comment at all on how we got to this proposed agreement.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick reminder, we've had a request to explain Pago tip.
Yeah, and we can do that. Whoever has the microphone, I guess you both participated.
Okay, so we did review this again at finance. This is as a result of the directive that council gave to go ahead and try to negotiate the best deal possible we could for Cobblestone, which was the developer of choice of the council. So we have, we have done that. We did start out, it was a question of finance, and we did start out by offering exactly what Eller's financial advisors had suggested. We knew that that was a large stretch, because we also knew what Cobblestone's initial request was, which was 1.4 million in Tiff assistance plus the land for free. So in an attempt to get to a place where we could bring this to you for a final decision or a minor counter, we had to negotiate back and forth, again, which we believe met the request of the council. So in that process, where we landed was the finance package would include tax increment financing tip of $1,150,000 of municipal revenue obligation issued on a Pago basis. So at 85%, so there's a lot there, but basically what that is, is it means that it's looking at the future revenue, tax revenue, that will be generated by that new development, and it's taking 85% of that and saying, we will use 85% of the future tax revenues, year over year, to pay back to the developer as an incentive to go ahead and build that within our community. So it just means pay as you go, which means that the municipality is not borrowing money to give to them upfront. We are waiting for the revenue stream to come to us, at which point we return 85% of that revenue stream until it hits 1.15 million dollars, or 10 years, whichever comes first. That number could fluctuate, because we don't actually know what the final assessed value is going to be once the project is built. So again, it's looking at future revenues that this will use. We're using 10 years at this point, and saying, whatever comes first, we'll give you 1.15 million dollars over that 10-year period, or we'll fund it for 10 years, at which point we're done.
Jason.
Yeah.
And with Tiff, so with that tax increment, Jason explained earlier that about a third of tax revenue comes to the city, a third goes to school, and a third goes to the county. When you have a Tiff setup, when you establish a TID, so a district, all tax revenue in that district is reserved for just the city. So we're not dispersing it to the other taxing entities. So you're able to get the full amount of property tax collected, and of the property tax, the developer is paying, you're using that to then return it to them, but only at, in this case, 85% of the total amount of tax revenue received. So we always want to retain a certain amount, usually no less than 10%, in a TID, because there are administrative costs, et cetera, we want to have some breathing room. So this is structured to retain 15%. And so whatever the actual tax increment generates, whatever the actual property taxes are based on an assessment, when it's fully eval, they'll get 85% of that and will retain 15.
Yeah, another interesting note about Tiff districts is that in order for the municipality to create one, it has to be approved by a joint board review, which involves elected officials from the county and officials from the school district. So the city has representatives, the school district has representatives, and the county has representatives, and then there's actually a, I think, a community member at large that's part of the...
That's correct.
Part of the group. So in order for the municipality even to employ the tool, we have to have the approval of the other jurisdictions that this tool affects. Okay? So that is a really short and quick on Tiff. Then the land sale, we arrived at being able to actually recover some of the cost of the land that the city did purchase years ago. We would recover $125,000 from the developer. We did also talk about the stipulation of how quickly we could expect this to go. The developer agreed that they would try to have all the financing secured within nine months of council approval. They asked for a year, we suggested six months initially, they asked for a year, we landed at nine months. That's a lot about how this negotiation went. We did also, we were dealing with Anna, probably get her last name wrong, but Juchek. She is a vice president of hotel development. At one point, we did end up on a team's call with Anna and the chief executive officer of Cobblestone itself. So that, that was a negotiation call. So at this point, I did talk to Anna today, this afternoon late, and said, are we good? Because the, you'll notice the council packet includes some terms that Ashley signed. However, because the final negotiation didn't occur until late in the week, we didn't have time to get the document amended back to them into their, you know, into their vice president, or president, whoever's going to sign it and get it back to us. But I did speak with Anna today and said, are we good with where we've landed on the negotiation? They said, if, she said, yes, we're good, we'll sign it, we just didn't have the document So then again, tonight, you can, we always like to have kind of a suggested action, and an action could be motion by the council to approve Cobblestone Hotels and Center Package as outlined in the proposed pre-development agreement, and to authorize staff to execute the development of a full development agreement.
Also move.
Motion for Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second for Ms. Tepley, is there discussion? Yep.
So I brought it up in finance, I'll just bring it up again, just for, you know, to put it out into the public. So looking at what Cobblestone originally asked, looking at what Eller's, our financial advisors, recommended, and then looking at the incentive package that is here, I do not feel that it has moved the needle in the city's benefit, except for the fact that we're going to end up with a hotel. You know, Eller's was saying that nine-year Tiff, but they should pay full market price. And we're saying, well, we'll give it to you for less than half of market price, and we'll give you extra time on the Tiff, from what Eller's is saying. And then we only reduced the Tiff assistance by $500,000. So I still feel like this package is benefiting Cobblestone. I don't feel like it is giving the city the benefit that it should be. So I just wanted to bring that up here, because I did bring it up in finance as well.
Yes, you did. Thanks, Melanie. Anybody else? Okay, we'll need a roll call.
All right. Schultz.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Tepley. Martinick.
Aye.
Walters.
No.
Cairns.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Number 12, Wisconsin Surplus Auction Reserve Pricing. This was at finance before, and you can see in your packet, we have three really specialty items that the city acquired over the years. One is the chipper that was used in the streets department that we've now replaced. And all of these items have been on Wisconsin surplus three times minimum, maybe four? Is that correct?
Two times minimum, maybe three.
Okay. And each time, we haven't met our reserve, what we set, and they're really hard items to market, because they're so special. One is the Zamboni that mounts on a three-point on the tractor, it's the ice reserver. It's in really great shape. I mean, if somebody wants a good deal on Zamboni, this is the time to buy one, because you're getting a heck of a deal. But on that sheet, you can see the average bid prices. I know Darcy's got the facts on the high and lows, but if you can remind me of the motion that I made.
So your motion was to recommend to the common council that the staff be authorized to adjust or waive, sorry, waive reserve prices for unsold Wisconsin surplus equipment at their discretion.
But you added that if it was at or above...
Yes.
The highest.
The highest, previous bids.
Previous bids.
Jason, do you feel that's okay, to try that again?
I, I felt like you had a recommendation that gave us guidance, but also left it that we felt that the price that we've received was a little bit different, that we could go ahead and move ahead.
That'll be my motion.
Motion for Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second for Ms. Tepley, is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just one point, and I reassess with the administrator all the time, but a governing policy for the disposition of property already purchased by the city may be in order, you know, the motion made here that you'll be voting on contains both the phrases "at their discretion" but also sets an amount. Those are directly contradictory statements. I see that we've synthesized a meaning to it.
So it was...
I don't think there was a...
It was originally as long as above last highest bid.
Yeah, so...
I can amend my motion.
So for this set of items, I think, moving forward with that is fine. The thought that prompted this is that the council has already expended the funds to purchase this equipment. It may well be that it is in the city's best interest to defer their eventual disposition to the individuals who know their use and potential marketability best. While there is the potential to bring in a certain amount of funds from the sale of these goods, at the end of the day, the council did its part in the acquisition process, and it, there is an argument to be made that this would be something that could very easily and would be in the best interest of the city to delegate to the administrator and/or relevant department heads. So again, that's something for future discussion, but I wanted to get everybody's thoughts on it.
Do you want to amend your motion?
It does not need to be amended.
Okay, well, just leave it. Unless you want to amend it.
No, I was, I just took a little offense to the, you know, the statement of department heads know best, when I've spent my entire life in this industry, so...
Got that. Okay, so we have the motion and the second, is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call.
All right. Walters.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Martinick.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, that moves us to Public Safety Committee, recommendations in action. Mr. Ron, Fruit.
First up, we have an application from St. Mary's Parish for their annual festival. It is scheduled for September 20th from 4:00 till 10:00 p.m. They've applied for a temporary alcohol beverage license, which they've done in the past. It's been reviewed by the police department, has the support of Chief Jones, and was passed unanimously by the safety committee. Therefore, my motion is to approve the temporary alcohol beverage license for St. Mary's Parish Festival on September 20th, 2025, from 4:00 till 10:00 p.m.
The motion for Mr. Fruit, is there a second?
Okay.
Second for Mr. Downs, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one's carried.
Next, we have the annual wine walk. The Richland Chamber of Commerce is planning the Suits and Sequins Wine Walk on September 26th. This again is an annual event, it will run from 5:00 until 8:00 p.m. They have applied for temporary alcohol beverage license, and you can see the different locations that are listed in the packet. Again, this has been reviewed by Chief Jones and the department, and the safety committee has given a nod and recommends, I would therefore move that the temporary alcohol beverage license for the greater Richland area chamber, Suits and Sequins Wine Walk, September 26th, from 5:00 until 8:00 p.m., be approved.
Motion for Mr. Fruit, is there a second?
I'll second.
Cairn gets that one, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one's carried, okay. Item 16.
Or 15?
Did I miss one?
I think so.
Sorry, I missed that. Could you have...
Well, you mentioned, as you shared with the community on air, the great number of activities that take place during the fall season, and one of those is provided by the Richland County Performing Arts Council. Their Central Avenue Fall Bash Block Party will be September 27th from 2:00 until 6:00 p.m. They, as in the past, again, are applying for temporary alcohol beverage license. My motion is to approve the temporary alcohol beverage license for the Richland County Performing Arts Council's Central Avenue Fall Bash Block Party, September 27th from 2:00 until 6:00 p.m.
Motion for Mr. Fruit, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Williams, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one's carried, okay. Item 16.
This also came before the Public Safety Committee. It's an ordinance amending Section 980.06 relating to persons authorized to issue citations and consolidating citation authority. I defer to the administrator Oliphant to talk a little bit about the merits of this.
Thank you, Ron. So this request is adding additional personnel that would have the authority to issue citations, so that would be zoning administrator, director of public works, the city attorney, city administrator, or their designated. There are numerous instances in which citations are an appropriate enforcement tool that we have before us. You can think of, for example, with mowing, typically the city has followed an abatement process, so we are actually notifying of the violation and then engaging in the work to correct the violation. We've not utilized citations in the past for that, but that is an effective tool that we could be utilizing, which would not affect operations in quite the same way. Citations are commonly used in zoning as well for enforcement action. And so this request is asking to allow those additional personnel listed to have that authority. They would have to work with Chief Jones and the police department to actually physically issue that citation, and they provide the information necessary for a citation to be issued. It also consolidates this into one section within our code, so rather than having multiple sections within the code that list multiple parties as having the authority to issue citations, it consolidates it right under this one section, making it easier to find, easier for our attorney to locate and defend as well.
And I guess I would just give Billy the chance to talk about the fact why the police department is the one that has to actually issue the citation.
So according to the state of Wisconsin, we all operate under what's called Badger Track System, and it is a system to write citations. We no longer have, as most of you probably remember, the triple duplicate, carbon copied, yellow, pink, and everything other color under the sun. We no longer have access to those kinds of citations, they're all... We no longer have access to those kinds of citations, they're all limited to the Badger Track system, and law enforcement is the only one to have access to that system. The civilians come out.
But this also streamlines the process for you as our law enforcement officers in the community, that's what I'm saying.
Correct, it'll save us some time, absolutely, and, I mean, it is an ordinance, we will enforce it, but if we can get some assistance along the way, we'll take that too.
This was discussed in Public Safety, and we recommend that it be adopted by the council.
Yep, I'll read it. Ordinance number 2025 dash 06, an ordinance amending Section 980 dot 06 of the municipal code of the City of Richland Center relating to persons authorized to issue citations and consolidating citation authority. Whereas the City of Richland Center has adopted an ordinance establishing the use of citations to enforce municipal ordinances pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 66.0133, and whereas the current list of officials of authority to issue such citations is limited and does not fully reflect the roles and responsibilities of city officials who are actively involved in ordinance enforcement, and whereas certain officials currently have citation authority granted in scattered provisions of the municipal code, which creates inconsistency and makes administration more difficult, and whereas the common, let's see, the common council finds it to be in the public interest to consolidate citation authority in one section of the code for clarity, efficiency, and effective enforcement, and now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the City of Richland Center, Richland County, Wisconsin as follows. Section 1, Section 980 dot 06 of the Richland Center Municipal Code is repealed and recreated to read as follows. 980 dot 06, persons authorized to issue citations. The following officials of the City of Richland Center are authorized to issue citations for violations of the ordinances of the city. One, police chief and police officers of the City of Richland Center. Two, zoning administrator. Three, director of public works. Four, city attorney. Five, city administrator or their designate. A, citation authority granted under this section shall apply to all violations within the scope of the official's respective duties and responsibilities. B, any additional officials granted citation authority by the common council in the future shall be added to this list by ordinance amendment. Section 2, whenever in, wherever in the Richland Center Municipal Code an individual, chapter, or section grants citation authority to a city official listed in 980 dot 06, that clause is hereby repealed and replaced with citation authority for enforcement of this chapter is provided in 980 dot 06 of this code, section 3. This ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law, adopted by the common council of the City of Richland Center on the second day of September 2025. Is it your motion, Mr. Fruit?
I would move to adopt ordinance number 20, 2025 dash 06.
Okay, the motion, do we have a second? I'm not sure which one we want. Mr. Martinick, it's the second, is there discussion?
Just a quick question, how is this different than, like, an administrative citation? I'm just looking...
I know what one of those is.
Okay.
I don't know what an administrative citation is.
Yeah, and just doing some background on administrative citations, they're typically handled from an administrative judge, so they are written by the folks that you have written down here, but it's an administrative citation.
I would say, then, the biggest difference is we don't have an administrative judge to rule on an administrative citation. I know that there's, hopefully not revealing any spoilers, but I know there has been discussion of the potential of a municipal court. I think that there would be some arguments to be made that, since it is wholly, or at least mostly a body of municipality, there could be an administrative element to that operation, that maybe we could streamline this process and make it an administrative citation in the future. But that's basically what it boils down to, is we don't have an administrative judge to enforce an administrative citation.
And that wasn't related to, like, administrative law judge?
Um, no, they, I mean...
ALJs are, you know, typically an executive bodies, immigration courts are actually, they have judges, but the judges are actually more like an executive officer than they would be a member of the judiciary or the Department of Workforce Development. If we have an unemployment claim against the city, that is heard by an administrative law judge.
Or probation, replications, things like that.
Then, yep. It just operates on a different set of principles than what people traditionally think in terms of court proceedings, and the body that creates the administrative court has far greater control over the options available to the court.
Because, I mean, you just mentioned, you know, parking on city streets, lawn watering, zoning ordinances, and the like, so I just want to know what the difference is.
According to Google, and I don't know if I believe everything I Google, but according to Google, that it goes hand in hand with an ordinance citation. It's just a non-criminal citation, so...
So, like, a C cap where you would see forfeiture rather than, like, a CM or CF, misdemeanor felony?
Etho and J O would be, and for those of you who may not be aware, there are two different kinds of law, there's criminal law and civil law. Listen to the intro for Law &amp; Order, if you want to deal with that part. Civil law is where I live, and that's everything else. Ordinance enforcement, forfeitures typically fall under a civil liability instead of, you know, I, it would be almost unheard of for me to end up in a situation where I was ever petitioning to imprison someone, but every other Tuesday, you can come sit and watch me in ordinance court and deal with all the speeding tickets and OWI ones and disorderly So, those are more, the city is basically the other party in, like, a lawsuit against the offending individual, and the harm claimed is basically, we put these rules in place as a city, you violated them, we are seeking a penalty against you.
Although, it is important to know, because this is usually what people see, is that often, even though these are civil penalties in nature, they do have the potential to result in imprisonment. So, like, it depends on what it is, but it could be 60 days in jail, things like that. So, if you don't pay your ticket, or, you know, you're not complying, there is an unlikely but a possible outcome in which you would be imprisoned in the county jail.
I have not yet had cause to pursue that, but certainly it is an option. And then there are also the potential for, so if you speed above a certain amount, you may be at risk of having your license suspended automatically. If you blow a .15 or higher on an OWI, you're, we, I more or less have to seek an interlock ignition, interlock ignition device.
Ignition.
IID. So, yes, that is what a civil forfeiture ordinance violation is, and so, we may actually, if that's kind of the definition, we're pretty much talking about the same thing. The government is telling you that you violated the law, as opposed to Billy or one of his officers walking up and physically detaining you, alerting you to a whole other set of laws you may be subject to.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, right now, we have 15 out of control lawns that we have logged this year. It's been very difficult for us to deal with those under the current ordinance. This will be a huge step in the right direction, and we'll put the onus back on the homeowner rather than suggesting that after a series of notices, that somehow the buildings and grounds team has time to go out and try to mow yards that are knee-high and filled with garbage and things that damage your mowers. The onus should be on the homeowner or property owner, and that's where this firmly directs the responsibility back to. So, I, as the public works director and believed in some grounds, you know, with oversight there, I would appreciate this passing and being a tool in our toolbox.
Yeah, I would add to that, it keeps our officers doing what we want cops doing, instead of, you know, going and hanging, you know, placards for lawn mowing and things like that. I, you know, bring it up all the time, I live here, if I call 911 and need an officer, I would want them not moving a washing machine out of someone's yard or something like that.
All right, all right, we've got a motion and a second on this. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? We'll have a roll call, please.
Fruit.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Martinick.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Item 17, that also came before the Public Safety Committee, an ordinance amending Section 300 dot 104 relating to forfeitures for public nuisances. Again, I defer to Administrator Olafonk.
Absolutely, so, we discovered this recently when Michael was in court and enforcing a related matter, and so we discovered that in our ordinance, Chapter 300, as Ron mentioned, we're lacking a minimum and a maximum penalty. We have in 980.05, a penalty fee associated with public nuisance violations, so if you were to be issued a ticket, we have that amount, I believe it's $263.50, but we don't have any room for deviation from that, which is often something that happens in court. It is a tool that Attorney Louisville uses, and so this establishes a minimum penalty of $100 and a maximum penalty of $500 for public nuisance violations, and so it just gives flexibility in the enforcement process. But generally speaking, if you're issued a citation, most folks pay that citation, they have the choice to just pay it and be done with it, but they certainly can contest it and go to court, and there could be some deviation from that 263 that I mentioned. We are lacking a minimum and a maximum in the ordinance, so this ordinance amendment is requesting that we put in a minimum and maximum. This is, the numbers 100 and 500, you can pick the numbers that you want there, but this is a general bracket that is utilized and is within that set schedule that's already existing of the 263. And that schedule of deposit, what I believe is referred to in 980.05, or whatever, close to that, close to that territory, that can be adjusted by the council. So, you, at one time, those fees were established, and they can be amended whenever you see
I suppose I should read this one? I got it. Ordinance number 2025 dash 07, an ordinance amending Section 300 dot 104 of the municipal code of the City of Richland Center relating to forfeitures for public nuisances, whereas Chapter 300 of the Richland Center Municipal Code regulates public nuisances and provides for enforcement of such provisions, and whereas 300 dot 104 currently references forfeitures without specifying the minimum and maximum amounts, which may cause uncertainty in enforcement, and does not fully align with the Wisconsin statutory requirements, and whereas Wisconsin Statute 66 dot 0113 and related provisions require municipal forfeiture amounts to be specified by ordinance, and whereas the common council finds it necessary to amend 300 dot 104 to set their minimum and maximum forfeiture amounts while preserving the city's ability to recover costs and charges associated with nuisance abatement, now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the City of Richland Center, Richland County, Wisconsin as follows. Section 1, Section 300 dot 104 of the Richland Center Municipal Code is amended to read as follows. For forfeiture, any person who violates any provision of this chapter or Chapter 823 Wisconsin Statute shall upon conviction forfeit not less than $100 nor more than $500 for each separate offense, in addition to all applicable court costs, surcharges, and assessments as provided by law. Each day a violation continues to exist shall constitute a separate offense. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law, adopted by the common council of the City of Richland Center on the second day of September 2025.
Reflecting on the discussion of the Safety Committee, I would move that we approve ordinance amending Section 300 dot 104.
Motion for Mr. Fruit, is there a second? Second for Mr. Downs on that one, is there discussion? Roll call, please.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Martinick.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next, appointments to committees, commissions, boards, and confirming, we don't have any tonight, again, we'll have Utility Commission and hopefully Historic Preservation at the next one. Library Board as well, that's right. Okay, public comment is done, which puts us, puts us at item 18, purchasing public property closed session, 18, the chair may entertain a motion to enter closed session to Wisconsin Statute 19 dot 851E, deliberating or negotiating and purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, is there a motion to go in closed?
So, move.
Steve, is there a second?
I'll second him.
Okay, Rachel, okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed, we are now in closed session.